And so, we, this survey is, again, 400 people. We pulled from a field, a random sample of about, there's about 20,000 of those voters in the city of Norman that qualify as a super voter, if you will. And so, this has a pretty representative sample of this, of the voting attitudes of that group. We fielded this from June 23 through June 27, so just a couple of weeks ago. And I've kind of pulled out a few key findings here that I'll go over with you, and then I'll go into some charts as well that you can look at. And feel free to ask questions and stop along the way if you have any. First, Norman voters generally view bridges as safe. We had 85% of those super voters say that, you know, they believe that their bridges are, in the community are either safe or very safe, or very safe or somewhat safe. And so, that's, the general understanding is that the bridges they're driving on are quite safe. And I will say that there's quite a bit of confusion about who funds those bridges. About a quarter of Norman voters thought that it was funds that came from the city. The others thought that it was things like county funds, federal funds, state funds, things of that nature.
Sure.
And, uh...
Let them know.
So, and again, there's also a misunderstanding about how many bridges the city is responsible for taking care of. So, 60% of these voters believe that they're, that the city was responsible for less than the actual 80 bridges you all are responsible for maintaining and keeping up with. Let's see, there's a general low level of concern about specific bridges. So, when we asked voters, you know, "Are you concerned about a bridge in your neighborhood or something that you regularly drive on?", only about, you know, 6% of voters said that they had a specific concern about a particular bridge. And so, when we asked voters where they're getting their information about these elections, 21% cited the Norman transcript, and that was the most cited source of information. Other, and I'll go through this, this will be on a separate slide, but other sources of information were, you know, things like asking friends and family, asking elected officials, asking, you know, they were looking online, you know, traditional news like radio and television, things of that nature. And then, we surveyed about the two different bond programs that you guys were considering. One was a 10-year, $50 million bond program, and another was a five-year, $20 million bond program. And you'll see within these results that the larger 10-year, $50 million bond program is much more favorable than the latter. And so, briefly, again, I'll go through this. This was the awareness about the number of bridges that the city isn't responsible for maintaining, that there seems to be a need for some sort of education campaign, you could say, around what exactly the city is responsible for. Because clearly, there's a general lack of awareness. Again, and it's also a lack of concern about the severity of which these bridges need maintenance. And so, again, when we talk about an awareness campaign, voters need to know this is why there is a concern, and express that need to those voters of why this bond program is needed. We asked them if they have voted on these issues in the past, and if so, why did they vote yes or no on certain issues? And we were specifically asking about infrastructure issues, so roads and bridges. These weren't, you know, obviously, Norman voters vote on a lot of different issues, but we specifically asked about these infrastructure issues. And most of the voters said that they had voted yes on these issues, and the primary reason for this was they understood that once you pay for something, you have to pay to maintain it. It was a little surprising that that was an over safety, but that is, was a continual trend throughout the survey we found, is voters understood that that maintenance was a high priority and something that you can't give up on. Again, safety second, though, and, you know, there's also third in there among voters was just a general, they knew it was good for the city. The city's growing. We need, you know, nice roads and bridges to drive on, things of that nature. In terms of people who voted no, some people said increased costs and taxes, they're already paying what they believe is too much in property taxes, don't want to pay more. Some people distrusted the way that funds were used, or they thought that funds could be used more efficiently elsewhere, but, you know...
I like how he skirted over the elected official distrust. Thank you.
Know your audience. Again, this is how they receive information. And so, when we're talking about educating the public on why these issues are important, you know, clearly, a lot of these traditional media paths are still important. So, when we talk about local news, going through the newspaper, still, though, several mentioned things like social media. They searched online. And so, you've got a broad range of types of voters, you know, all ages, and so, you're going to need a broad approach to these educational campaigns. And so, let's see here. We, one of the concerns was, obviously, due to how Norman is structured, citizens have to vote on quite a number of issues. And so, we were a little concerned, is the frequency of elections leading up to a vote like this going to make people not turn out? Is that a concern? And really, that's something that we don't need to be worried about. Most of these voters said that even if they are having other things to vote on this year, they will still show up to vote in an election like this.
But they're super voters, so wouldn't they would anyway, right?
Right. But what you don't want to have happen is voter fatigue, and, you know, these voters that do care about Norman don't show up to vote because they're tired of voting.
Like, these 400 are happy to.
And I think what you'll find is, that's a good thing, because these 400 that are happy to turn out to vote are also in support of this bond issue. And so, let's see, again, this is that lack of concern about a specific bridge in their neighborhood. Clearly, most are not concerned. So, highlighting specific bridges of concern for those voters in those areas might be important to explain how it's going to benefit them. And now, we'll go over the two different proposals here. This is that 10-year, $50 million bond proposal. And so, nearly 70% of voters would vote in favor of this bond issue. Less than 30% would vote no. And the next proposal, just under 60% would vote yes, closer to 40% would vote no. And so, there's a clear favorite among this, and when we looked at the individual responses, most voters cited things such as "we get more for less", and by that, they mean they're paying less every month because it's spread out over a longer period of time, but we're accomplishing most of the needs of the city, fixing most of the bridges that are problems or things of that nature. And this is, again, how, why they, why we asked them specifically in their own words why they would choose to vote one way or another. Some of these, in this top line here, this other non-responsive, most of these were people that said, "Well, I need to see more info." And these are people that are just, they want to do their research. They're not going to really say one way or another exactly, but you'll see here that large reasoning for voting yes, the 27%, again, it was this, people understand maintenance is needed. They understand that it's better to maintain something than have to replace it altogether. And so, that's the large understanding for those that said that they would vote for it. Again, safety coming in second, that's also important, good for Norman, third there. Those that said that they would vote no, the top three there are, let's see, are too expensive, so taxes are already too high. Again, these are people that talked about things, saying, you know, they're on a fixed income, they don't want property taxes being raised, they already pay too much. But again, that was 11% of these voters. 9% had distrust, said that the city was wasting money, could use those resources in whatever area that was towards these bridge issues. And again, other was general complaints about, 7% said that they had general complaints about who had to pay, and those were things like, "This burden shouldn't fall only on property owners, you know, there should be some sort of sales tax", or, "And/or find ways for the federal government, the, you know, state governments, county government to pay for this, not us", kind of thing. And so, again, those are the top three main reasons. Yeah, exactly. And level of trust, we've got a pretty healthy bell curve here. Most people have a moderate level of trust in city government with those viewing, you can kind of see the tails of that curve going on either way. But again, most people have a pretty moderate trust in city government. And so, then I'll let, hand it over, and you can go over that.
So, I'll take it from there. Thank you, Johnson. Any questions on, I mean, there's a lot more, there are other survey questions. We provided the whole set table. We kind of pulled out the ones that we thought were the most important, and any questions or concerns you have?
I just want to circle back to an election date. So, October timeframe was pretty okay with them? Were there any other months identified?
We did kind of a historical look back on other election dates as we got closer to the holidays, so closer to the end of the year. There really hasn't been any negative trends due to putting things later in the year. And so, I would expect this October question to be pretty consistent with how people would turn out to vote, even if you put this on in November or whenever you decided to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Have a holly, jolly election. Who's mad at that?
Yeah. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay.
Okay, so, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
So, it kind of comes down to, then, we thought these were the two key points. Again, what package are you most comfortable with? I know we talked a lot about the five-year, $20 million program last time, but we're getting feedback about the other one differently through the survey.
Counselor, I'm former.
Did he, were you at first?
You were just two seconds before she...
Oh, okay, sorry. I was just going to say that I favored the 10-year. I leaned more towards that last time, and I felt like the public would probably feel that way, too, over time. So, I would be in favor of moving forward with the 10-year.
I was supportive of the 10-year this entire time, and I would like to move forward with the 10-year.
It seems to be consensus. Do you have any contrary thoughts? Yes, sir.
No, I support 10-year program as well. Maybe November sounds better in my mind than October, but...
We have the ONG in October.
September.
September. So, we have, October's free.
But people know to vote November, right?
Let me offer this. If you did October, we just, this was the calendar that, it's coming fast. Catherine and her team are already working on a ballot ordinance, depending on what the feedback was tonight, but we would literally have to get that first reading at the next meeting.
Okay.
I guess if it were November, that was about a month later, Brendan, about August-ish, so that, this is what you would, what we would try to do if you selected October. Let me offer a few things. So, a couple of readings on the ordinance, ballot ordinance, very important. And then, we would work with the Gooden Group to help us with the information, campaign materials. Of course, Tiffany is going to be critical in our program. And then, usually, we tend to hit the information campaign with civic groups and board meetings and that sort of thing a couple of months, a month and a half ahead of the election date on October 10th, and then, of course, Election Day there. And then, that program would begin, the Bridge Maintenance Program would begin in May of '24 with our first project.
Counselor, I'm a great.
Circling back to elections, is there anything on that October ballot, so it would be by itself? What's on the November one?
Not now. We're not, we're aware of that. And it would have to come fast if there was something else, but we're not aware of anything on October.
OGNES September. This would be October.
ONG.
ONG. I get them right. Easy. And then, what's in November that we have? I don't think anything for us. I would say the general consensus seems to be October 10th, heading up to this schedule, going up, and it appears to be 10-year, $50 million. Does that sound right with you, councilmember? Okay. I think we have general consensus.
Thanks, sir. We'll get to work. We've got a lot already prepared, but we'll be getting all that together with Catherine for the first reading on the 25th, and then, of course, the hearing on August 8.
Perfect.
Okay.
And counsel, that is very helpful when we have a united front from our elected officials saying, "This is the path we need to go down because we've got submission-critical issues." So, we appreciate that clarity.
And is that going to overload legal, though?
No.
No.
I have listed projects.
These ladies do the work of 10 men. It's a piece of cake.
A piece of cake.
Catherine loves it.
That's why she's falling apart.
Okay, thank you very much. We're excited.
Thank you for presenting that. It was perfect. All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding an easement, lease agreements, amendment to the road use agreement, and right-of-way agreement with Nextera Energy Transmission Southwest relating to its Draper Pleasant Valley Minko Transmission Line project.
Hi, I'm Beth Maglet, the City Attorney's Office. Pardon me a moment while I challenge my computer skills. Anyone want to walk me through this?
Go ahead to the top. I got it.
It takes a few tries sometimes. Okay, so, I was here on April 25 discussing this project before. We have a new face and also some new information, so I'm back. At that time in April, I did mention that there would be a transmission line easement coming, and we talked about that generally. It's now ready. It is on tonight's agenda. It is item 32. Along with that is a compensation agreement that literally sets the compensation for that lease so that that number isn't in the, or sorry, that easement, so that that number isn't in the easement itself. And then, we have also on the agenda tonight, a lay-down yard lease, which is on the same property as the easement. And you all are probably familiar with it, but it's the NUA leased property that's located at the northwest corner of Franklin and 12. And before, on April, is when we discussed the road use agreement, which, as you know, kind of set our general terms for taking care of our roads during their construction. And it, you'll remember, it was two phases. The first phase is identifying the roads that are affected. The second phase is when they come back to us with specifics about that, and they work closely with Public Works to determine how we protect our roads. Well, this would be an amendment to the first phase of that, the scope. And I see I skipped over one. We have a right-of-way agreement that will be coming, and this is new since the last time I talked to you. It is regarding impacted crossings and also access drive needs within the right-of-way. That will be on a future agenda, but I will get into that a little bit more in that discussion tonight. So, for the benefit of those who might not remember or didn't see this, this is just information on Nextera. This is their national presence. As you can see, they deal in, you know, wind, solar, natural gas, all sorts of energy projects across the country. So, this is not a small player that we're dealing with. This project is mostly demonstrated here. I showed the portion that we're most affected by, but it's 48 miles long total. It's a FERC project, which is federally regulated, and so, it went for a bidding process through the Southwest Power Pool. The purpose is to connect three OGNES substations. Those are the Draper, Pleasant Valley, and Minko stations. The Pleasant Valley is the one found around here in Norman. And it impacts three different counties and properties across those three different counties, so... Here is where it is mostly combined within the city limits of Norman. You can see it coming in there a little east of 48th, and then, it trails along the middle of the properties. It's not primarily located on frontages. And then, it skirts down, and it is along Franklin for a bit before it turns south, again, cutting down those larger rural properties. And then, it's going to trail off and cross the river just outside of our boundary. These are the poles. Again, they're large, they're 345 kilovolts, they're tall, up to 125 feet. They're designed to have a compact footprint and be weather-hardy, which, you know, in Oklahoma, wind hardy is what we're looking for. Concrete foundation, and they're guide structures. So, digging into the actual agreements that we're here to discuss, I wanted to start with the easement. Again, we've talked about it a bit, but it's located on that property that is the future site of Northwater Reclamation Facility. So, obviously, NUA has been very involved in this process. They've been evaluating the appropriateness of allowing the easement in this location. Will it affect that? And there is no anticipated impact on that. And the easement is going to skirt along the northern boundary, and I'm kicking myself now for not including an aerial, but if you looked over your packet documents, there is an aerial in the attachments that shows you. It's along our northern boundary, and that northern boundary is, again, in the middle of that quarter section, so it's not along a frontage there. They were initially requested 150 feet width, but through negotiations, there was a reduction. And so, the furthest western point is only about 70 feet, less than half that width. And then, it goes up to 101 at the furthest point east. It's about a little over five acres, and it's outside of the leased area that I'm going to be discussing next. Again, I gave a lot of large changes to Nextera. We discussed this last time, but they have form agreements with a lot of language that they like, but they were very receptive to some pretty large cuts. And so, we removed language that we aren't accustomed to or that isn't friendly to our policies that we have in place for how we deal with our properties. And they accepted our counteroffer on the value, and so, this easement will come with a compensation of $125,000, a little more. We have a completely defined boundary now. There was some initial language that allowed wiggle room for the location of guide wires based upon need, but we're not comfortable with language like that. So, now, we, they have to stay very clearly within that easement area, the way it's written. Let's see, we removed some waiver and other language that we simply don't agree to. We made sure that the language we prefer is in there, such as indemnity, insurance. And so, it's now in line with our general agreements like this. Another thing that NUA was very careful to ask for was that the property be restored to its original condition if this line is ever abandoned, instead of a situation where the poles could be locked off, you know? So, we think we've thought through a lot of the ins and outs of it. And so, that agreement, again, will be, I think, item 32 on the agenda, along with the compensation agreement, which is, again, setting the compensation for the easement, but it also has a little bit of extra damages language in there. Probably doesn't implicate us, but we left it in because it was pretty standard, so just in case our crops are damaged. You're covered. All right, the lease. This is the same property, and it's also on the north side, but the northern boundary of the lease is the southern boundary of the easement. They just bleed right into each other. This is a short-term lease, and the purpose is for the placement of construction materials and activities during the construction of the actual transmission line. So, they've been in discussion. In fact, their engineers have been in direct contact with our people here to discuss the ins and outs of what they plan, how they're going to, for instance, lay down gravel. We've built in language that has maintenance procedures that are going to protect surrounding properties in the case of that gravel. And again, all of these changes were presented to Nextera, and they approved. This was mentioned at the last meeting. At the time, I thought the request had been withdrawn, but now it has been renewed. It's a short-term lease. The initial term is one year. After that, it could go month to month, and we've set compensation based on that. Obviously, a little bit of flexibility if their construction goes longer. The initial term will cost $36,000, do all-in-one payment with a $2,000 signing bonus. And then, we have a $4,500 a month, per month rental if they go beyond that initial term. The changes they accepted on the lease were very similar to the easement. We made sure we had a defined boundary. We removed the language we didn't like. In particular here, we made sure it was an as-is lease. There was some environmental guarantees in there that we just, we don't make, and we're not going to make in this case, so they were comfortable taking it as-is.
Environmental to what, like creeks and rainages?
Oh, it would be language indemnifying for the presence of environmental contamination or anything that liability could come up for during the term of the lease. If they were to come upon it and become potentially liable, then we could be pulled into a lawsuit for something like that. Because they're taking it as-is, we've protected that. Now, if their activities lead to any environmental issues, we are protected. That language is in there. So, again, replacement of indemnity language, insurance and related language, and it looks more, more like our agreements now. And again, I mentioned this, but the property maintenance particulars really are how they need to treat that gravel while it's in place to make sure that we aren't going to be a nuisance to any neighboring properties. So, the future items that I mentioned are a little bit of a tweak to the scope of the road use agreement. And again, we're just talking about how many roads are covered by it. They may want to add a couple and remove a small portion of one. It's a pretty minor tweak. It's just whenever they come back to us with more detailed information, they want to be covered and make sure they have options for their construction. So, if planning, sorry, if Public Works is fine with that, you'll see that on a future agenda. And then, we might, the right-of-way license agreement. Again, that involves aerial lines only. We don't have any underground requests, which, that's preferable. They also asked for some temporary construction drives within our rights-of-way. And this is not typical to right-of-way agreements, but it's not atypical in the case of people working on projects like this. So, we have a mechanism to address that as well. We do have standard agreements on our rights-of-way that you've seen before. This is a little more unique than that, so we think we're going to start with that, but we're also going to address the more unique issues, such as the construction drives, impacts on properties and vegetation, and just really make it a tight agreement. ODOT has a standard agreement for this, so we'll probably be referencing that for some guidance as well. But we really wanted to make sure that we were starting from the right form. So, you'll be seeing that at a future meeting as well. This is the timeline. Tonight, you're going to have the easement and compensation agreement, as well as the lease. They're items 32 and 33. And in the future, the road use agreement amendment and the right-of-way agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, ma'am.
When do you think the right-of-way agreement will come before us?
It's possible it could be on July 25th, but we are pretty tight for that timeline. And as I said, I want to make sure that this agreement actually fits our needs. So, if we don't get it done, it could be the next.
So, July, August?
Yes.
Have we coordinated with adjacent property owners, and they know this is coming through? I know they know there's an easement there, but have we done anything to talk to those persons yet?
As for the lease, it's located on the furthest eastern portion, right next to the road. And I'm not aware, Nathan, of whether you know our adjacent neighbors there, if we've spoken to them.
We haven't spoken to them about the lease area, so... There's a pretty good buffer, like, if you look in the packet, there's the riparian area there to the west, and so, there's, you're right up against Sooner Road, and you're not really a buddy. We have the person that owns the property to the north. They were there when we met with their engineers, so they do know that this is coming and that we plan to, they plan to use it as a lease area, so...
And I will say, I believe some easement is being obtained from the property to the north as well.
Did I at least give them information? It's just somebody's not going to come up with a tractor on their place and start digging holes.
Oh, well, of course not, right. And the accesses to the leased area are all set out within the lease itself as well, in the exhibits, so, yeah, we should be avoiding any issue like that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from council? Thank you, ma'am. That was short, sweet, and quick.
Thank you.
Anything else from council before we get done? Any other questions or anything? We're adjourned from this.
Still cookies next door?
Still cookies next door. All right, thank you all. All right, thank you all.
The Council of Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of July 11, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you please call the room?
Councilmember Ball is absent. Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Present.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Is absent.
Is absent. Mayor Heikele?
I am here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is the administering of the oath to office and the seating of Councilmember-elect Michael Nash, Ward 5. Judge? Ms. Board, um, Nash?
Very good. If you had to me, I'd state your name.
I, Michael Nash.
You solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
With the support, obey, and defend?
With the support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma?
The Constitution of the United States.
The State of Oklahoma. That I will not knowingly receive?
That I will not knowingly receive?
Directly or indirectly?
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing?
Any money or valuable thing?
For the performance or non-performance?
For the performance or non-performance.
Any act of duty pertaining to the office?
Any act of duty pertaining to the office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law?
Other than the compensation allowed by law?
I further swear?
Further swear.
I will faithfully discharge my duties?
I will faithfully discharge my duties?
As councilmember, best of my ability?
As councilmember, best of my ability?
Nash, I declare your duties sworn, Ward 5, as Councilmember of the City of Norman.
Thank you. There you go. Item number two, awards and presentations. It's a resolution of the Council commending and recognizing City of Norman employees who have received recognition or presented awards or been presented awards by outside organizations in connection with their duties at the City of Norman. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion, second. A motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers? You may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the resolution passed unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the resolution. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, commending and recognizing City of Norman employees who have received recognition or presented awards by outside organizations in connection with their duties at the City of Norman. Whereas it is a responsibility of the City of Norman to maintain the welfare and safety of the citizens of Norman, employees do so through their qualifications every year. Whereas employees are often recognized or receive awards from outside agencies or organizations for their expertise and/or participation in specific organizations or events throughout the year. And whereas City Council would like to highlight those recognition resolution on an annual basis so that the community is made aware of the exemplary service and dedication of the City of Norman staff. And whereas Janita Hatley, Inspector, was named Oklahoma Code — excuse me — Oklahoma Code Enforcement Officer of the Year by the Oklahoma Code Enforcement Association for her exemplary service in studying and advancing the science and practice of code enforcement through training and education, ultimately leading to certification. And Janita is the first code enforcement officer to have received this honor twice. And whereas Stephen Hardeman, Water Reclamation Program Manager, was presented the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Oklahoma Water Environment Association in recognition of his 39 years of membership and exceptional service over many years in advancing the organization's mission to provide leadership, engage water professionals, and leverage knowledge to support clean and safe water solutions for today and future generations. And whereas Taylor Johnson, Transit and Parking Program Manager, was selected as the Transit Professional of the Year by the Oklahoma Transportation Association for demonstrating exemplary leadership qualities, effectively assisting the Norman community to accomplish goals, creating collaborative partnerships, and promoting the best practices in the transit system. the best practices in the transit system. And whereas Cindy Robbins, Deputy Court Administrator, was selected as President of the Oklahoma Municipal Court Court Clerks Association, which strives to provide professional education to its members and facilitate the exchange of knowledge and experience among municipal court clerks in Oklahoma. And whereas Brett Scoville, Sanitation Program Manager, was presented the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Keep Oklahoma Beautiful campaign for his visionary leadership in developing projects such as the Household Hazardous Waste Facility and upward of 70 solid waste management operations for the communities across Oklahoma. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby recognize, applaud, commend, and extend their sincere appreciation to the city employees who have been recognized and/or received awards as they exemplify the City of Norman mission statement, uh, mission statement, working together to deliver exceptional service, and thank them for their service to the community and the citizens of Norman. Would Janita, Stephen, Taylor, Cindy, and Brett come forward, please? And give them a big hand.
As a former City employee, it makes me proud to be able to stand with these kind of people who do such a good job, and they are absolutely invisible to most of our lives. And that's the thing that we want to do, is make sure that City employees who receive these kinds of things, if everybody knows up the stretch of their pocket, and just know, and fresh and ever.
Another proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, excuse me, proclaiming the month of July 2023 as Waters Worth It Month in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
I have a motion in second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of July 2023 as Waters Worth It Month in the City of Norman. Whereas Waters Worth It Month is being promoted by the Environmental Control Advisory Board to help increase community awareness of Norman's most precious natural resource. And whereas Waters Worth It is a campaign by the Water Environment Federation to help answer questions about how our actions, attitudes, and the things we most value are closely connected with water. And Waters Worth It Month is one of the many ways to help promote the protection of Norman's water by increasing educational efforts, including educational posts on various social media and electronic platforms, information in newspapers and literature showing citizens how to conserve and protect water. And whereas Waters Worth our respect, communities are built on water, and whereas Waters Worth our effort, clean water is everyone's responsibility, and whereas Waters Worth our health, and water is life. And whereas Waters Worth our future, dealing with an aging infrastructure, and whereas Water is Worth Our Passion as we find our solutions for the 21st century. And whereas the protection and conservation of Norman's water improves the quality of life by having a cleaner and more abundant supply of water now and in the future, reduces the cost of water and wastewater treatment. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 as Waters Worth It Month, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to become knowledgeable and acquaint themselves with the problems involved in maintaining safe water. I recognize Sarah Bondi, member of the Environmental Control Advisory Board. Would you please come forward?
Today, I stand before you with immense pride and gratitude on behalf of the Environmental Control Advisory Board to accept this vital proclamation. It is my honor to accept and share with you the declaration that the month of July shall be recognized as Waters Worth It Month in the City of Norman. This proclamation serves as a powerful reminder of the vital role that clean drinking water plays in our lives and the responsibility we bear to protect our lakes and streams. Water sustains us in ways we often take for granted. It is a source of nourishment, a sanctuary for countless species, and a playground for our collective enjoyment. We must always remain vigilant and steadfast in our commitment to preserve and enhance the quality of our water systems. In the midst of breathtaking landscapes and pristine bodies of water, we are reminded of our duty to treat nature with the utmost respect. It is the legendary naturalist John Muir, who once said, "When we try to pick out anything by itself, we find it hitched to everything else in the universe." These profound words encapsulate the interconnectedness of our actions and the environment around us. Fortunately, there are numerous simple practices that we, as citizens, can adopt to make a positive impact on our water quality. Let us begin by embracing the power of education and awareness. By understanding the sources of pollution and the consequences they entail, we empower ourselves to make informed choices. Let us be mindful of the products we use and their potential impacts on our water supply. Opting for eco-friendly alternatives and proper disposal methods can go a long way in preserving the purity of our lakes and streams. Furthermore, we should encourage the responsible use of fertilizers and pesticides to minimize runoff. Additionally, let us cherish the value of conservation. Together, we can reduce our water consumption by implementing small changes in our daily routines. Fixing leaks and practicing mindful irrigation are two ways we can help conserve the precious resource. Moreover, let us engage in community-driven initiatives. Please join us in one of the several upcoming events that will celebrate water in our community. On July 18th, the Lake Thunderbird Watershed Alliance is hosting a rain garden workshop at the Cleveland County Extension Office. And on July 23rd, the City of Norman will host a very exciting rain chain workshop at the Central Library. Additionally, the Central Library will host Storytime, where they will feature water-themed books and activities on July 24th, 28th, and 29th. July 29th, the City of Norman is hosting a workshop and cleanup at the Central Library. Lastly, on July 30th, the Lake Thunderbird Watershed Alliance is also hosting Love Your Lakes Bugs and Fishes event that will teach citizens about the critters that live in Lake Thunderbird. For anyone that would like to learn more about these events, they are listed in detail on greennorman.org. In closing, I would like to extend my deepest appreciation to our honorable mayor and councilmembers for bestowing upon us this proclamation. May this month be the testament to our unwavering commitment to safeguard our lakes and streams for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Council announcements. Which end do you want me to start? I'll start at seven, just because.
I want to thank everybody that attended and helped put on the Fourth of July events and festivities here in Norman. I was out of town, but I heard it was a really wonderful time, and everybody had a lot of fun, from what I heard. Also, want to, I'm sure Councilmember Grant will speak about it as well, but just a reminder about this Friday, Second Friday Art Walk in downtown Norman. And then, want to mention that I had a really great road trip with my dad last week. Was able to reflect on a lot of things and think about a lot of things to come and get some inspiration for different ideas as well. And I'm very much looking forward to working with this new council and our retreat that's coming up, and the ideas that we might be coming up with for how to continue moving our city forward and addressing the major issues that we all know about in our growing city. And so, very much looking forward to working with this new group. And I want to welcome Councilmember Nash back to the council. Very much looking forward to continuing to work with you to address the issues in Ward Five and the rest of Norman. Thank you.
Councilmember?
All right. Well, I'm tickled to death. For me personally, I'm going to talk about my feelings. Tonight, I'm really excited because with Nash, the band is back together, right? So my side of the dais, what are we, South Side? The South Side Dais. When I was a brand-new baby councilmember, the first time I sat on this dais was between Nash, Holman, and Peacock. And we're the only ones up here who can speak to surviving whatever 2020 was. We trauma bonded during that. I got to know them professionally and personally, and their friendship and support over the last three years has really made a difference to me. So it's not wasted on me that, as I start my fourth and final year on council, that I'm very, very fortunate that I get to kind of go out the way I started. So, welcome back, Nash. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash, do you have any?
Yeah, for those of you who remember my tenure last time, you'll know that I'm not very long-winded when it comes to announcements or any of that. But I am incredibly humbled to be back up into the seat tasked with returning a voice to Ward Five and City Hall and ensuring that the people are put back into the priority that they deserve. And I look forward to the next couple of years, and I know that there's absolutely no way it can be as disaster-laden as 2020 and 2021. Knock on wood, I guess. Famous last words. It can't get any worse than that. So, yeah, with that, I thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Grant?
Yes. I too want to welcome Councilmember Nash and also Councilmember Montoya and say congratulations to Stephen again, now that everybody's been sworn in. Since Councilmember Peacock isn't here, I'll just briefly mention that Wednesday, July 12th, so tomorrow night, at 6:00 PM in the Nancy O'Brien Center for the Performing Arts, One Norman Town Hall meeting, where the first draft of the Norman, or Vision for Norman, will be presented. The vision is a document. That's a culmination of weeks' worth of work. On behalf of the Vision Task Force, there will be an opportunity for the community to have input that evening prior to the final version being adopted by the Steering Committee. There is no charge to attend, and all are welcome. We do have Art Walk this Friday. If you buy a T-shirt, I don't know if you know this, but you get some deals for your Second Friday if you're walking around in it. Also, would like to extend a congratulations to all our staff that won awards or recognized in the community. And also say thank you for the Fourth celebrations and the storm cleanup that seems to be ongoing. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Montoya?
Good evening, Norman, Oklahoma. Thank you all for being here. I would like to congratulate and welcome Councilmember Nash back to council, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you to Parks and Rec for organizing and planning the Fourth Fest. It was a lot of fun. And other than that, I'm glad that you all are here and watching at home.
Councilmember?
All right, I get to bring up the tail end this time. It's always quite fun. So I want to echo the congratulations to our city staff. It is not lost on any of us that the staff is really what makes this city run. They are the ones that are interfacing, I would say, most frequently with our residents and helping them with challenges and problems. And I think many of us up here will always say that we have the best city staff in the country. So thank you for all the work that you do. I want to also extend my welcome to Councilmember Nash. He, I'm the only one on this side of the dais when I, from when I entered two years ago. So that's what the other side looked like when I came on council two years ago. And so it's, I guess, nice to have the same view. So welcome back. Looking forward to serving with you. And then, want to remind everyone again that we are having our council retreat next month. And so we'll be looking for priorities to bring forth for the coming year. These are items that we will talk about in our upcoming committee meetings that we have. We didn't have any committee meetings this month. Those will start back in August. So every Thursday at 4:00 PM, we have some kind of meeting. And then, finally, I just wanted to let everybody know that I am going to be unplugging for the next week. I will be leaving on my honeymoon, so I will catch you all in a full week's time. So if you do not hear from me, please direct your needs, your questions to the City's Action Center, and you can find information on how to contact them, that number, or the email online. So I'm going to take a little bit of a rest.
Councilmember Nash, welcome. And I wish you all the success in doing all that you want to do while you're here. Next item is Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda of the City Council by unanimous consent. Can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. Staff recommends that Items Four through Item Forty be placed on the Consent Docket.
Second.
I have a motion in second. The motion on the floor is to place the Items Four through Forty on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items Four through Forty on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion in second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you all. Item number forty-one, ordinance number zero-two-two-two-three, upon second and final reading. Rezoning property located Sims from the Center City Form-Based Code and place the same in the Center City Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Is there a representative of the to make a presentation? Hello, Peter?
Hey. Good evening. Thank you, counsel, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm here today just to talk to you a little bit about
Tell everybody who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Peter Petromelli, for those of you who don't know me. This is four-one-on-one West Sims, just south of the Railhouse here in Norman. What we're looking to do is, I don't know if there's a what we're really looking to do is modify the Form-Based Code as minimally as possible on this. We're doing a four-story apartment complex with two and three-bedroom units. This is going to take up about the south ninety-two feet of the existing parking lot that the Railhouse uses. And so it will lose about fourteen spaces for office, for the office that we use here currently at the Railhouse. And then, the rest of it will end up being used for the residence. And so you can see, kind of right there is our property looking from the south, down the street, across the street is the railroad tracks, some more housing, a little shed that we'll end up demolishing. And so this is really what we're looking to do. Really, the reason we're here today is there's the address off of one-on-one West Sims would prohibit us from utilizing the full frontage on James Gardner. And so what we're wanting to do is utilize the frontage off of James Gardner and create that as the front of our building. And so as the James Gardner Boulevard gets revitalized, we can, we can And so, as the James Garner Boulevard gets revitalized, we can, we can, you know, take advantage of that and showcase the front of our building there. A couple of small other modifications to the code that we're wanting to do is push the building more towards the corner of Sims and James Garner Avenue, similar to what we did a few years back when I came in for a PUD off of Apache and James Garner. And so, we kind of can create that active street edge there. Other than that, there's really very minimal changes. I think we modified a few things or clarified a few things on windows just to make sure the fenestration was kind of what we wanted, more windows along the front and the side and less off the back and the rear of the building. Any questions?
Councilmember Holman?
Okay, so, just for clarification for the audience and everybody watching, you could build this building by right under the Form-Based Code, but it would have to be addressed at, towards Sims Street. But to kind of fulfill the desire of many council members, including myself, we think that the building should face James Garner, the busier main street that we're about to redo and everything. So, you could build this under the existing code without having to come to us, but you're coming to us because you want to kind of fulfill the spirit of what we're trying to do with...
Yes, that's correct.
And it being closer to the sidewalk.
And, yeah, and basically push this a little closer to the sidewalk. And again, still feeling like that's more of the vision of this area. But really, if I didn't come here today, what we would do is take a portion of the building that's closer to the Railhouse, so the bottom right side of the sheet, and push it up to the top left side of the sheet where those five parking spaces are, and just relocate the parking more on James Garner.
So, this scenario, that parking would be off the existing alleyway instead of being visible from, from this new street that's going to be out there?
Yes.
And new street parking will be added as well along James Garner?
It will, and the city staff is working through that right now. And Scott and I have spoken briefly about scheduling that so that we're not building something and then being torn out when they come back through. There's some stormwater infrastructure that's being put in underneath that parking. So, timing of that's going to be something that we coordinate with them.
So, there'll be some parking lost here in this parking lot by the building being there, but at the same time, some parking that doesn't exist is being added on the street.
Yes.
I don't know if it's an even split, but, okay, well, that's the questions I had. Just, again, wanted to clarify that you could build this project right now, but you're wanting to orient it a way that is kind of, it's the spirit of what we're trying to do here.
This is more of an orientation-type change than it is a use. I don't think we're changing anything in the use. And then, the other thing that we're doing is we're removing two drives, two existing drives, one off of Sims Street and one off of James Garner. And all, and so, now all of the parking for the facility will be off of the alley, or all of the private parking, and then allowing for street parking both off of Sims and James Garner.
And you mentioned all the units are two- and three-bedroom?
Yes.
Two or three-bedroom?
Yes, there are eight two-bedroom units, I believe 12 three-bedroom units. First floor is type B accessible, every single unit on the first floor.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Gray?
I'd like to talk a little bit more about the stormwater, or as much as you can talk about it. For those watching back at home, that's a lot of impervious surface, which is a parking lot before that. What are you doing in conjunction with city staff for stormwater? And what are some other features that might also address stormwater?
Sure. We are, for those of you who don't know, we do have somewhat of an issue with stormwater out in front of the Railhouse currently. And so, staff has been, has actually been working with my partner at the Railhouse and myself on being able to tie into that stormwater system to eliminate some of the issues that the Railhouse is having right now. One of the other things we do on all of our projects, and we'll do it on this one as well because it's just good practice, even though it's not required, is we provide infiltration trenches on our property, and we collect the rainwater from our roof and allow them to gather that and store it on-site in these infiltration trenches underground. And typically, this will happen under our parking or in some green space. And so, you don't even actually see it happening, but it's just, but it's just kind of a great way to kind of, I don't know, manage the water that runs off your building and make less of an impact on the surrounding, on your neighbors.
Okay. And then, my other question would be about the housing type. Who is coming to live here?
So, most of the area is basically students, but these aren't rent-by-the-bedroom, they're not, they're actually just, we lease them per unit, so either two-bedroom or three-bedroom units, and they're open to anybody who would like to live here.
And is the cost stratified by floor, or is it about generally the same cost per unit?
It's generally the same cost per unit. I haven't seen, just in my experience, we haven't had any, in any of our properties that are student-oriented or not, where this, a different floor height would be preferable. You know, these don't have elevators, and so, if you're on the third and fourth floors and you're getting a better view, then you're walking. Also, our intent is for our first floor to eventually be turned into commercial space. And so, everything on our first floor is being designed to the commercial standard, whether it's the fire sprinkler or electrical or HVAC systems. And so, it can be easily modified. And so, hopefully, in the future, and it's actually, hopefully, in the future, that's one of our, one of our goals. And we actually wrote in a special provision in the code to recess our doors off of James Garner so that as we do change to commercial, they can swing out and not into the right-of-way. And so, there was just a small bit of language in the code that we changed to allow for that.
So, keeping in with Center City having an active street edge and some commercial on the bottom, yeah?
We would love it, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay.
Councilmember Schuler?
Similar question. So, thank you for addressing the stormwater and for talking about the bottom floor being convertible to commercial. Those were kind of my main questions. But while I have you here on the record, can you maybe talk about the future of the Railhouse? You're not intending to tear that building down or anything related to this, correct?
No, we are, I actually, I office there and, and so, in the basement, so anybody who wants to find me there, I'm either there or on a lift somewhere in Norman. But no, actually, I am committed to, and I'll say this on the record, I don't know if it'll hold long-term, but I'm actually meeting with a event planner on Thursday. And we do have events continuing to go on, on the Railhouse, even through what will end up being a pretty decent construction period. But, but no, I, you know, I think there's things you can't come back from, and this is one of those buildings. And so, you know, it's, we're doing what we can, everything we can, Zach and I, to preserve the Railhouse, and I feel very strongly about that.
Awesome. Thank you. I know that, you know, there have been other properties that you have done within this area, within Center, in Center City to maintain character and, you know, do unique projects with the Rock House Bar being one of them, right? Kind of preserving the old nature of, you know, what was happening in our Center City area. And for those of you that don't know, I have a, the Railhouse is a special place in my heart. It's where my partner and I got married. So, we've been deeply committed to making sure that that building stays as it is and as kind of a landmark in the community. So, I appreciate your continuing that vision and preserving that space.
Oh, thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to make comments regarding this item?
We have two signed up, mayor, or actually for Orlando Gravel.
My question is, what kind of landscaping is going to be kind of surrounding this area since we are having a higher increase in crime in this area and in our downtown area? I was wondering what kind of things are going to be done in the landscaping to help prevent any of that?
Mr. Petromelli, would you answer that, please?
Sure. I can't say that we've actually done really anything specifically in the landscape to prevent any crime. We do provide 24-hour security via cameras on our properties. And in the past, there was, it was 2020, 2021, we had seen an uptick in crime in the area, and so, we had night security that we paid to drive all of our properties and a couple of our neighbors as well. It's, we haven't noticed it lately over the last, say, 18 months, so we're not doing that currently, but if it, if it becomes a problem, we'll do anything we can. Just on the landscape, just across that corn, you'll notice there's four, four large deciduous trees that we are planting on James Garner, and then the same thing, I think there's five down Sims Street, and then just sods. So, we're not, we're not trying to do, we definitely wouldn't do anything that would create, you know, like a shrubbery-type place where people could hide or create a little space for themselves to kind of make camp. So, hopefully, that'll, that'll help deter anything.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Chelsea Gravel. Mary Francis, did you want to speak?
She here? Yeah.
It's always nice to hear about building up instead of out and sprawl. And it's also, in addition to that, we have already, the area is concrete, and it's impervious. And so, it doesn't take up any pervious area. It's already impervious. So, that's, that's the good news, and I thank this council members for asking the questions about stormwater and the stormwater issue that we have. I'm wondering if, I have been, sitting back here, and all people sitting back here, can't see the speaking, the mouth of the person speaking, just like you can't see mine, which helps in understanding, and also, the speaker was, had a very low voice. And so, I didn't catch very much of that, but it appeared that people concerned with stormwater on the council were satisfied with the answers, so I'm going to go with that. And I'm wondering about affordable housing and what this is, how this will play into that, if at all. And there was a mention I heard of special provision, and if I, the speaker would explain that again, I didn't quite understand what that special provision was. So, those are my questions and observations. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was one special provision that we put in there to recess our doors off of James Garner just a little bit further than what's currently allowed. And what that does is it allows us, as we, since we're building, we're required to build within two feet of the property line. When we change to commercial, there's a requirement to swing our doors outward, but yet, we can't swing into the right-of-way. So, we have to at least recess some three feet, and we like to do it just a little bit more. And so, I think we put the provision in there for four feet, just at those doors or patios. And that was it. You're welcome. Yeah.
Seven, done?
I support this. I love the progressive approach that the applicant is making. I wish we had a criteria in place that all builders, every person who's coming to this council requesting a variance, that they would have to conform to permaculture design principles. There are people in this community, Brandon Wade, John Rushton, Jackie Soursale, who would help in setting that up.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council? Excellent. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. I was looking at him, sorry. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
I have a motion in second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Item Number Forty-Two, Preliminary Platte for the Domerica Edition, generally located at 3360 South Classen Boulevard, approximately one-half mile south of State Highway Nine, on the west side of Classen Boulevard. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary platte.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Is there a representative of the applicant? There he is. A representative of the applicant here to make a presentation?
Thank you. I'm Bill Swain with Park Hill, the engineer on the project, the owners here if we end up having any questions.
Welcome, sir.
For them. Anyway, I'm not finding that on here, so I'll talk without it. The first thing is, this is a expired preliminary platte and previously-approved final platte. 2009, the direction of the owner halted midstream, so it simply expired, and we're coming back with essentially the same layout, design, planned uses, and all that sort of thing. In general, we, I'm sorry, we have stormwater detention to the west, so we are detaining the stormwater to the pre-existing runoff conditions. We also have cross-access easements to both sides of the property. Our site plan lines up with the entrance on the intersection across the street, so it will help, as the previous resolution required, ordinance will help to have a single access point for those neighbors. They can come through the cross-access to help with the traffic on, on the highway there. A traffic study and projections were required and performed on this. The numbers didn't reach the level that required the warrant for the signalization on the, on Classen, which is a state highway, so it would not be signaled at this time, but previously, there were assessments for traffic impact fees, basically. So, upon filing of the final platte, there is an established fee to go towards the future signalization in that area. So, water and sewer are already on the property from the previous project that expired, so we're really just basically requesting that we restart the project and get going again.
Thank you, sir. This is an opportunity for members of, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Councilmember?
Thank you. My questions are mainly about traffic and stormwater. So, one, though, parking, as, when the previous platte was approved years ago, we would have had a different parking standard. Now, we don't have a minimum requirement. Does this reflect that, or would there be some reworking done?
We have laid it out and recounted the square footage and generally tried to comply with what previously would have been required. At this point, there's only really one established restaurant to get, to go in there, so the other layouts in the site plan are purely kind of hypothetical for, and there's only one lot in this block parcel, so we have some latitude to adjust some of the square footages and parking depending on what types of businesses might come in for those developments. But it is pretty much laid out to where the parking would match kind of previous parking requirements.
Okay. I just want to make sure the owner was aware of our changes to our parking requirements. I just want to make sure the owner was aware of our changes to our parking requirements and that there is an opportunity to have less parking if you feel that that's what you need. And so I appreciate that answer. Stormwater in this area in general is an issue. It's an issue all over Norman, as we know, but we've had issues in this particular area and what this area drains into. And so it's currently an open field. And you're saying the way this project would be designed would be to, there would be no change in the existing.
Yeah, the current drainage flows west to the BNSF railroad ditch there. And our detention is laid out at the very back, so it will, will catch all of the developed runoff and designed to release at previous flow levels.
It is a detention, not retention.
Right.
Okay. And the traffic issue has really been my main source of heartburn about this, maybe, is that, I do appreciate that it lines up with South Lake Boulevard, but Classen Highway 77 is six lanes wide at that point with a open middle turn lane. And I've observed it myself trying to come out of that neighborhood. And as people are going south on South Lake Boulevard to Classen, and they want to turn onto Classen Highway 77 to go south towards the Walmart Supercenter down there or to Noble, it can be very difficult in the current conditions to see south because there's a fence line right there. And I had definitely gotten some feedback from some of the residents in South Lake neighborhood with concern about now there, there'll be traffic across the way from them that they're going to be trying to look out for, in addition to trying to cross six lanes of traffic potentially. And so without a traffic signal there currently, that's really the biggest concern and only objection I've heard from the neighbors down there. Not really any objection to this being commercial or being developed or businesses going in there, just concern about that intersection. And we've had to make, I say, we, we had to lobby ODOT for several years to get them to make improvements to Ann Brandon Boulevard, which was a pretty dangerous intersection for a long time. Right there were Starbucks and McDonald's and then Taco Bell's across the street and a gas station and Buffalo Wild Wings. So we were having a lot of issues right there, a lot of accidents. And ODOT finally made some improvements there that have significantly reduced the amount of complaints I receive from, from folks down there about that. So that, that though, being a concern about how traffic is that, I don't, I read the traffic report, but it really kind of just showed the counts. And I know the counts may not show it being necessary for a traffic signal, but kind of like that external safety issue with.
Yeah, and I think one of the processes with the state highway is they have to have a technical warrant for that, which the traffic counts have to actually be there and projected to be there. So unfortunately for them, it has to get more traffic to actually warrant getting the signal there. So I think that's, obviously there's a lot of traffic there and a wide, a wide pathway of lanes to cross. So it's set up to receive a signal and it's previously established the fee that, that this owner or any other developer has to contribute to that for the ultimate improvement of that. So at this point, I'm not real sure what the owner can do more than they are. We still do have to have engineering plans approved and things, so we can work with the Public Works Department Engineering to get those as conducive as possible to, one, be as safe as possible now, but also to be prepared and receive those signalizations when they're actually warranted.
And this, that'll be the only driveway, though, that accesses Classen. Is that one.
I'm sorry.
That'll be the only driveway.
The only one to line up with the intersection. And then, like I said, the thing that is provided is cross-access. Should the parcels on either side develop, they can also come out to the future signalized intersections. So there's not other points of access that people can't see where people are coming out into the traffic.
And that, that driveway is being built to accommodate a future traffic signal, I assume?
Yes. And when we say warrant, for those that don't know, it doesn't mean, we aren't saying and others aren't, that it would be good to have a signal. That's a term that Department of Transportation and, and uses for the actual calculations and stuff to show that, that that warrants it in their terms, so that they try to keep traffic moving, so they monitor and study their best-case scenario for traffic movements.
Okay. I might ask our city staff, Mr. O'Leary, if possible, just to make, maybe some comments from staff's point of view about this intersection and future plans and working with ODOT and our history of experience on.
Happy to. Thank you, councilor. Yeah, a lot of really great points Mr. Swain made, and you made some great ones yourself, Councilman Merholman. One thing I would add to that is that the staff and council have anticipated signalization of multiple intersections along this portion of US 77, Classen Boulevard. I'm remembering Renaissance Drive, South Lake Boulevard and Post Oak Road. And each of those are located in your capital improvement plan. They've been in there probably for a decade or so. The city has allocated the city share for a future signalization or, or other improvement that might be related to that. However, as, as Bill said, the city has no jurisdiction over this road. In fact, we've done, I think, the best we can with, with any new development along there to limit them to as few access points as possible and that sort of thing. But we are completely at the mercy of the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. You, you stated the case very well. We thought Ann Brandon should have been changed 10 years ago. And it took about that long to beg our partners at ODOT to make those changes. And it sort of reached that point where it was pretty serious and they responded and made some nice improvements. Hopefully we're, we're getting better at their response. But, but that's exactly what we're doing with this intersection and Renaissance and Post Oak, and that is to communicate pretty frequently. They receive all of this information that you're receiving tonight as we look, work, work with developers. And then we monitor these intersections very closely throughout the year to try to anticipate if things are happening, like you mentioned, congestion issues, traffic collisions, concerns, that sort of thing. Technically, this, even if the city wanted to finance the entire project, which we generally don't on a, on a highway, we're not allowed to. Only ODOT can authorize and, and install signalization on US state, interstate highways. And so it, it just is a partnership that we have to work with them. And again, we work pretty well, but I have found in my time here that the DOT here in Oklahoma is a little slow to respond to urban highway intersection improvements. I don't know if that's a lack of funds at the state level or, or what that, what causes that. But in my previous experience in Kansas and Iowa, there was a little bit more responsiveness to these kinds of things. I think it's really a funding issue here in Oklahoma.
Okay. And the funds that the development would be putting forward towards a future signalization, that's 20 years, that it would be held if, or?
Yeah, really indefinitely. There's no expiration necessarily on traffic impact fees. We certainly hope that there's a point where we can cash that in. But no, we are collecting, as it indicates in your staff report here, a per-trip cost. So this development and every other development in the vicinity of this intersection has paid a traffic impact fee based upon that per-trip rate that was established, again, probably five or 10 years ago with the first development. That, that rate is calculated based upon the cost of the improvement. So the, the theory is that the city's share is going to be covered with all these developer fees and then ODOT would pay the, the remainder.
Okay. Well, I would, I would suggest for us as a city, if, if this project is approved, that we do keep a close eye on that South, South Lake Boulevard connection. Because it is tricky to turn left and go south right there as it is right now. And now, right now, you don't have to look and see if anybody's trying to come across from you. So I think that'll be a concern that the neighbors will have. And so I would want us to make sure we're paying close attention to it. So I appreciate your.
You're welcome.
Yeah. That's all the questions I have.
All right. This is an opportunity, opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there anybody registered to do so?
Carlena Gravel. Chelsea Gravel. Mary Frances.
Just a warning, I signed up for every item except one. You never know what, if your issue may be discussed by council, as it was just discussed by my council member, to my satisfaction. But if it hadn't have been, then I would have been up here talking to the issues of traffic. So, and thanks to the, to the Sean, our, one of our employees that should have gotten an award, he's augmented the problems there. So, but heed my warning, I always need to find out the details. Thank you.
Evan?
I support this. Evan Dunn, Ward seven. Again, I wish we had a permaculture criteria that we had to meet. Thank you.
That's it? All right. Any final comments from council? All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
My disease is coming over you. Ordinance 0222352, upon second and final reading, increasing the number of voting board members to the recipient entity of the convention and tourism development funds from 13 to 19 to allow additional board members representative of the sports industry and sports community. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion in second. Like to recognize Heather Poole, Assistant City Attorney, to make any comments. There she is.
Well, you've already introduced me. Thank you, Mayor Heather Poole, City Attorney's Office. Basically, in a nutshell, the ordinance is conforming to the new contract with the request that the, the Visit Norman made, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, to expand their board to allow for other interests within the city of Norman to sit upon the board. And basically that's the difference, to accommodate the increase in funding, to allow for the programs and the Sports Commission, the Sport Norman Group, that they will be funding as well.
Thank you, Heather. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Marguerite Larson.
Marguerite, are you here? I saw her.
Do you want to speak, Marguerite? Okay.
Oh, there she is.
Marguerite Larson, Ward six. I have concerns about this because my, my, my biggest concern is advocating for sports and maybe taking away from other avenues that could happen as far as arts are concerned and performing arts are concerned. So that is, that is my biggest issue with this. And so if you can explain to me how this is not going to affect that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carlena Gravel. No, I'm sorry.
Do you want to speak to that, Heather?
To the public question, just briefly, what it is doing is it's expanding the board instead of removing individuals who represented the arts community that were previously on the board. So instead of adding additional or, or replacing members or positions on the board with individuals involved in the sports community, and there were already individuals that represented interest at the University of Oklahoma or the, and the Norman Public Schools, but this is expanding it to allow an additional four individuals who would represent other sports interests, but not removing any of the other arts and community involvement representatives.
Chelsea. Mary Frances.
Well, I, this is Mary Frances, Ward seven. I'm glad to hear that the arts members of representing the arts community are going to stay on the board, since that's one of my issues. I first agree with in fine arts. But I'm wondering why so many sports? I mean, all different sports, there must be, and, I mean, right now their university is building another huge softball stadium, which I think the women that play softball deserve. But there's room, I would think, for more academic members and members of the arts. And because I see the university and the, and the city very, very involved in sports already. So there you go.
Evan Dunn, Ward seven. I support this. I like the idea of there being more viewpoints expressed, and I hope you support it.
Any final comments from council? Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt, oh, council member?
Yeah, so what exactly is the problem that's being addressed by increasing the number of votes from 13 to 19, the additional six, I guess, members representing the, the sports community? Do we have, is there a problem with our sporting events having a lack of a voice in, on that, on that committee?
We changed, when we changed the tax, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, this is Dan Shim from the Visitors Bureau. When we changed and we voted in the tax, we voted in a sports commission. This is that sports commission that's going to take care of that part of the arts. It doesn't, doesn't take anything away. We just asked for another commission to make sure that the kids' sports are all scheduled, the adult sports are all scheduled, and everybody gets equal time on the field.
Okay.
Is, is, was that a correct answer?
Yeah, would you like me to share? Dan Shim, Executive Director of Visit Norman, and Ward five, resident. So the additional guest tax increase that was just voted on, on May 9th, was directed to go the split that Visit Norman receives for a sports commission formation with the venues getting completed through Norman Forward, basketball, volleyball, baseball, all the diamonds, soccer. I'm leaving some out there. But we looked at best practices around the country of what other sports commissions do. Instead of creating a separate Board of Directors, because this is all guest tax dollars and all under the Visit Norman umbrella, we're instead adding four sports folks. Twenty-ish percent, 25% of the additional increase will also go towards venue enhancement. So we want those sports facilities on and, and talking to us. We're experts at bringing in visitors. They're the experts on what those facilities need and have. So we want their input on this. The existing board that focuses on tourism right now, leisure travel, group travel, those types of things, still will stay on there. We have an arts representative that represents the Norman Arts Council Board and serves on ours as well. And in fact, this additional dollars that were voted on for the Norman Sports Commission allows us to take dollars we were currently spending for sports. We weren't doing as much as we needed to because we didn't have the venues and we didn't have the, but we were doing some still. We're shifting that back to leisure travel and local event sponsorship and other things. So we're really ramping that up as well for being able to sponsor arts events and festivals and those types of things. So the, the additional spots are just to take care of the monies that are focused purely for sports per the vote that happened on May 9th.
Okay. So how many board members in total will be representing the sports industry and sporting community?
There were, currently, we're at. There were, currently, we're at fifteen. So, this will be adding four members that represent in some form or fashion youth sports. There's an application that we have created, we'll be looking at collecting those, I'll post that on the website, so anybody that's interested can apply for that.
I'm sorry, were you asking how many were on the board already related to sports?
Oh, already. There is a mayor appointee, youth sports person, and that currently is representative of NYSA, Norman Youth Soccer Association, and then the mayor also appoints an OU Athletic Department representative. So, currently, there are two representatives on the board for sports.
Okay, so eight out of the nineteen?
Two out of, so we'll have six.
Altogether, there'll be eight out of nineteen because you're writing six.
We're at fifteen now. It said thirteen in the, but it, we're at fifteen board members currently, that changed some years ago. We're now adding four, so six out of nineteen.
Okay. I think it's all my questions.
Thank you, sir. Somebody got cleared. Who? I saw Tortorello up there, and I didn't think that was right. Anyway, we've gotten all the council, we've gotten everybody else. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final, or upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, item number forty-four. Oh, better do the whole thing. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on sec, I did second reading. Final reading, on final reading. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes. Maybe.
Okay, sorry.
Don't blame Bryce.
Now, go ahead.
Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your patience. All right, next item, forty-four. Ordinance number zero, two two, two three, five three, upon second and final reading, an ordinance granting Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division for a period of twenty-five years from approval and acceptance of a non-exclusive franchise and right to enter the public ways to install, operate, and maintain a distribution system with, along, across, and over the public ways of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, for the transportation, distribution, and/or sale of gas to consumers and to the public generally in the city, providing for the submission of this ordinance to an election of the qualified voters of the city on September twelfth, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading.
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion and second. Is there a representative from Oklahoma Natural Gas here to make a presentation? Yes, he is.
Justin Frederick, on behalf of Oklahoma Natural, new of a franchise with Oklahoma Natural, Oklahoma Natural has served this community and been a partner for many years. We've actually had a franchise here since the early fifties, nineteen fifties. So, our current franchise is expiring next spring, and so this is continue, going to continue that franchise. It's substantially the same as what the current franchise is, it's at the same rate. Currently, the, the revenues that are brought in through that franchise to the city is about one point six, one point seven million annually, so that rate will stay the same. The difference is that you may or may not have noticed is, is the current franchise is twenty-five years old, so it's on more of a, more modern template, but substantially the same terms. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yes. When we had our study session, we talked about some of the provisions that are in the franchise. Can you talk a little bit about, like, I'm not going to be able to remember the exact wording, but if other cities raise their franchise?
Favor Nations Clause.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about that and how that's in?
Yeah, so Favor Nations Clause and, and currently, the rate that the city of Norman has now is currently at four two five. That is the, the highest rate, well, it is equal to the highest rate we have with any other city across the state. Typically, the franchises that we have in Oklahoma here average about three percent. And so, the current franchise that you all have has what I refer to as a Favor Nations provisions, and in essence, if we have a franchise, since these are twenty-five year franchises, the state allows you to have a franchise for a maximum twenty-five years, and so to the extent if another community were to receive an amount above what the city of Norman has, you would get the benefit of that rate for the remainder of the franchise.
Awesome. And then, can you remind us what percentage of your infrastructure is underground?
It would be the vast majority of that, I mean, I would consider that ninety-plus percent. I mean, we're a gas distribution company, so the majority of all of our transmission, distribution lines, main lines that serve actual homes, service lines, are all going to be underground. We do have some minimal above-ground facilities that you all may or may see that are typically maybe behind some, some coverage. Obviously, you see the meters at your house that are above ground, but the vast majority of all our facilities are below ground, and we have a ninety-nine percent reliability rate as far as outage is. A good part of that is because our facilities are underground.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Holman, thank you. Appreciate your answers to those questions, similar ones. What kind of a general overview of investments does ONG plan to make in Norman over the next twenty-five?
So, I can tell you that we've installed about twenty thousand feet of new mains since 2022, and so typically, what investments that you would see from us is, would be one of two things. You're going to be handling aging infrastructure, so to the extent, you know, the pipe that's underground is, is aging, we will replace that, and there will be investments in that, and then a growth, of course. So, community like this, where it has growth, will obviously be investing dollars to capture that growth, to make sure we're extending pipeline, or it may require upsizing pipeline to handle the growth in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Oh, did? He already talked. Make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there anybody signed up to speak?
Marguerite Larson.
Marguerite Larson, Ward six. So, my biggest concern with this is the safety, and who in their right mind signs a twenty-five year contract? Nobody really knows what's going to happen in twenty-five years, so I have a real issue with the length of the contract, and I have an issue with the way it's being sold. Thanks.
Carlinde Gravel. Chelsea. Mary Frances.
Mary Frances, Ward seven. I was here when the original discussion with the council came up about OG&E and their franchise, and there was a lengthy and somewhat heated discussion from the council members, major issue being the twenty-five year franchise. And council, at that time, refused to accept that twenty-five years, they had discussed five years. And they also refused to accept the claim that OG&E made, that it does not negotiate. And now, we've had several years of negotiation in spite of their claim.
Yes, ma'am, but we're talking about a different company. OG, this is not OG&E, this is ONG, the Natural Gas Company.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I've got OG&E on the brain, okay. But still, we're doing a twenty-five year contract. Yes, I understand that they do have quite a number of their facilities underground, and I like that idea, yeah. But keep in mind what I just said about OG&E.
Yes, ma'am.
Evan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I have a question about the qualified voters. Would that be council who's approving this? Who would be the qualified voters?
Registered voters in the city of Norman, sir. That's all? All right. Any final comments from council? Oh, councilmember Grant.
Actually, I just have a question for ONG. In line with that twenty-five year agreement, that's for, in a sense, having stability to feel confident in building infrastructure. I'm also curious about your renewable natural gas, and if some of that is coming here, what strategies for our future in climate change will you be investing in over the next twenty-five years?
So, I will tell you that, that the largest item now we're dealing with as far as emissions is in large part replacing aging infrastructure, because you have older pipe that, that does leak, so that is probably your more significant source. As far as RNG, there is a lot of movement in that area. Currently, we do have an application before the Corporation Commission, which is our state-regulated body, for a pilot program for, for RNG. And so, what the intent of that would be, similar to years ago when wind was coming on, and you had kind of a voluntary tariff where you could sign up and pay a little bit more to say that you received wind, it would be, what we're proposing would be something very similar to that. And then, to see where that, part of that is, it'll be more of a pilot program to see if there's enough interest amongst our customers to pursue that option.
Well, I got on your website real quick, and I was looking at sources of that, so capturing bioaaze and all that. So, would a pilot program, could it be someplace like Norman? Where are you looking at it?
Could, we've had some, some very beginning discussions with the city about, you know, is there some facilities here that, you know, could be a potential possibility for that? And so, we're open to those discussions. It's very, it's very new across the country, just RNG in general and getting it in the pipeline, and obviously, there's costs involved in that, but we're very open to that, and part of this pilot that we're doing is just seeing if there's openness to it, like other sources, kind of like you have on the wind, when it, when it came up, it's not cheaper than traditional gas, obviously, so it is more expensive, so that drives up potentially costs. And so, that's one reason for the pilot, to see if there's an interest there. We do have approval through the commission already to purchase a minimal amount of that that would flow through, you know, just as bulk with our regular gas that we have, and this pilot program will see if, you know, people are interested in subscribing to it, to see if it's something that, what the commission would be concerned with, and the AG's office, which represents, you know, customers in this state, in those cases, since the cost is more than traditional gas for RNG, they want to see how much the interest is and see what the impact would be to overall rates, and so that's why it's kind of taken a very, you know, baby step, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yes, just some comments. I just want to, I guess, highlight what we're doing here tonight. So, this, these items are for us to place this on the ballot so that every, you know, registered voter in the city of Norman can have a say on actually signing this contract. So, the nine-member city council is not actually entering into a twenty-five year contract. We, we have to have the approval of our citizens to, to do that. I think that it's also important to note about the Fair, Fair Nations Clause saying this is something that we don't have with OG&E currently, as I understand, that if another city raises their franchise agreement, their percentage, then we also will get that raise. And so, I think that that shows a little bit of, you know, a different conversation that we're having with this entity. So, every franchise agreement is slightly different, and us approving this tonight is just to send it to the ballot, that is not us approving the contract directly with ONG, or, you know, stating how we're going to vote as private citizens on, on a vote. So, just wanted to remind everybody that this is, you will have the opportunity as a citizen and a registered voter of Norman to have your say on this contract.
That is correct. By a state law, for a municipality to provide that franchise, it's kind of a two-step process. The utility negotiates or communicates, so to speak, with the city and come up with the draft of what that franchise is. Once it's approved at city council, and there's a, an election date that is approved, it's the qualified voters that are in the municipal city limits that have to approve that franchise. And if I recall, subject to check, you know, this current franchise is twenty-five years, it's, is expiring in the spring, I believe it was most likely approved at three percent. And so, over that twenty-five years, is there's been changes with other, other communities in the state where they have increased theirs above three percent, that's where it, you know, got to four and a quarter today.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I would just add to those comments that I also did have concern about the twenty-five year agreement was one of the issues for me regarding the other utility. But I would note to everyone, from my perspective, there are some considerable differences in this agreement than that other one, and then things like the ability for that rate to change, if it changes in other places, but also that the, you know, almost all the infrastructure is already underground, and the ninety-nine percent reliability rate are two major differences I see in this utility than the other one we've discussed that voters have voted on before. And so, that's why I feel more comfortable with this one going forward at the twenty-five year mark than I did with the other one. So, just for everyone that is concerned about that specific aspect, that's from my perspective how I would view it differently than the other one that we are discussing and are continuing to discuss, and will have to vote on again as well, so, but that's, anyway, that's my thoughts on it from my perspective. Thank you for your answers. Go on.
Anyone else? All right. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Just a second. Can we vote? Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number forty-five, a resolution giving the Secretary of Cleveland County Election Board notice of a special election to be held on September twelfth, 2023. I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. This is companion or item to the previous ordinance. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the, the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number, ordinance zero, two two, two three, five four, upon second and final reading, repealing Article two, two, one, 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 dash, two, Art in Public Places Program. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Second.
I have a motion and second. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item.
Sorry. I do, we did have a question. I should have introduced Mr. Shim and had him come up, because this too is an ordinance is based on a request from the entity that it references the National Arts Council, and Ms. Kaffigan has comments, but let me see if I can get them back, to simply explain why the National Arts Council has made the request that they have made. And again, the only ordinance?
National or Norman?
Norman, sorry. Norman, sorry. It's not even that late, so I'm not sure why. The only ordinance that is being removed is 3 dash, is 2-309, which references the Public Arts Board, and that is being moved in the contract that was approved earlier this evening into a subcommittee that is governed underneath the Norman Arts Council. It's not doing away with the Utilities Bill Donation Program, which is under 2-310. So there had been a question about that. That program will still be in place. People can still make those donations. This is just doing away with the Public Arts Board. And on that note, if Erin wants to explain why Norman's Arts Council would like to revise the governance of the public art decision?
Please.
Have you operated this before?
Yeah, I think so.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. We first proposed this, actually, to city council almost a year ago, and I think there's a couple of you on council that weren't here when we first talked about this. So I'll just briefly go over the reasoning for this change. So we proposed to sit the city that the Public Arts Board, which was a joint commission of the city of Norman and the Norman Arts Council, become solely a committee of the Norman Arts Council, and that we would form the Norman Public Arts Committee as one of our standing board committees. So the reasons that we did, we were wanting to do this was that it cleared up some confusion about the legal standing of this particular body of people. It allowed for more community involvement in public art, allow the committee to work more nimbly, merging the like missions of the definition of public art within Norman, and also provides full-time staff expertise in public art administration for this group of people. Oops. Okay, I thought I did it. Sorry. I was going backwards. Sorry. So just a couple of points on sort of the reasoning behind that, behind our purposes for doing this, defining the legal, the standing of this group of people. So since the Public Arts Board was formed by this ordinance that we're talking about, bringing to an end this evening, the, the ordinance defined the Public Arts Board, but the Norman Arts Council has always been fiscally responsible for this body. We've always reported those public funds that come in for public art on our 990 form that we have to submit every year to the IRS. Councilmember Montoya was our board treasurer when we started talking about this and has been very supportive in how we kind of got to this point with this. So defining that legal standing was really important for us. Increasing community involvement, as a board or a commission of the city of Norman, we were limited on the amount of people who could really be involved in the decision-making processes and the selection of public art in Norman. By bringing this in as a committee of the Norman Arts Council, a 501(c)(3), we were able to open that up. And we were able to bring in more voices without having to go through a formal appointment process for people to serve on that committee. Since we have had this committee working, and we have been working somewhat informally for the last year as the Public Art Committee of the Norman Arts Council, but we have really made a lot of progress in the last year. We have moved much more quickly on projects. We have quite a few projects in the works, several of them still in conjunction with the city of Norman and using public funds, but we're able to do those quicker and move those through a process of getting the approval to submit an RFQ or an RFP to get public art in place. We can do that much more quickly now. And now that this, the Public Arts Group is part of the Norman Arts Council, we have full-time staff who are on hand to be able to help with marketing and fundraising. Since this, this committee's been operating under the Norman Arts Council, we've been able to leverage over $30,000 of private donations that have come in to support public art specifically for a project that's going to be installed in Andrews Park this fall. So we're, we're very excited about that, and we're really able to give this group the support they need with full-time staff. Sorry, I keep doing this the wrong way. So when I originally proposed this to council, the Arts Council Board had already approved this transition. Utility bill donations, as Heather mentioned, will be administered exactly as they are. They are deposited quarterly from the city to the Norman Arts Council. We earmark those funds specifically for public art, that is, on city of Norman public property. The new agreement between the city and the Norman Arts Council has been written and has been approved tonight. It was encompassed in the agreement that you approved in the consent docket this evening. All current Public Arts Board members who were in place when we made this initial transition were invited to remain on the committee. There were three of them at the time, and two of them are still on the committee, along with 18 other active committee members. We have three project subcommittees that are currently working on specific projects. They're working very efficiently in getting those projects in process. We are working on a creation of a mural program for the city. The Arts Council has allocated some of our hotel funds increases to this. The city allocated budget funds for this with their budget approval, and the process for this is being established now. We are currently working between the city and the Norman Arts Council to establish how that mural program will be, will function within the city. And we're currently working on two projects specifically for the city, also the Development Center. We are about to post a request for qualifications for artists to paint a large mural in the new Development Center in that big, long hallway that's just a white cavern at the moment. We'll have a beautiful mural on one side, and then on the other side, we have a separate committee working on a rotating gallery of Norman artists to be installed. And the city's already hung the hanging system for that, and we are ready to go with that as well. Additionally, we've hired a summer intern, a paid summer intern, who is working on condition reports for some of our public art projects. So the bike racks, the Norman Parks Project, the ducks that are in the parks, and also our Artful Inlets Project. Those are projects that get a lot of wear and tear, and we're going through this summer and doing condition reports on those. And then the Public Arts Committee will decide how to repair or de-install or move forward with those projects. So in the last year, these are the, the things that this newly-formed Public Arts Committee's been working on. I do want to reiterate that it, it sounds scary to remove this ordinance, but it absolutely is in the best interest of public arts in Norman. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions from council? You just want to be set free?
Let us go.
That's a good thing. It is time, any members of the public that want to comment?
Marguerite? Carlinda? Chelsea? Mary Frances?
Mary Frances, word seven. This is the perfect example of the need for more detail, and I thank Erin for doing a delightful presentation of the details that we needed to note, because the way this is worded, it could be interpreted as repealing the Public Arts Program. And I'm so delighted that that's not happening, and thank you very much.
Evan.
Thank you. Evan Dunn, word seven. I support this wholeheartedly. I would ask Erin to define, what is, it says it's expanding the definition of public art. What is the definition of public art?
Thanks, Evan. That's a good question. So in our minds, public art is anything that is viewable and accessible by the public. Traditional definition of public art is that it's on some form of public property, whether that's city, county, or state-owned. But we know, we've got murals in this community that are on private property, and those are public art. They are completely accessible to the community. So one of the things that we are working through is we want to expand that definition of public art, is how do we perhaps leverage public funding to incentivize public art being created, murals in particular being created on private property?
Have you seen the new mural that was put down at the police department, down to the firing range? You ought to. It's quite nice. Recognize Catherine to tell us that there's an issue with the ordinance.
Thank you. So as you all know, we, we have started a new process entering in ordinances and making changes within the software that your meetings agendas are now on, MuniCode. It really doesn't like it when you repeal ordinances, we found. And, and we thought that we had resolved it. The title in this ordinance is absolutely correct, but it's only showing a repeal of one section when it should repeal the entire article. So I would ask for an amendment to repeal Section 2-308, Section 2-310, and Section 2-311. All of those provisions have been put into the contract of the Norman Arts Council, but that would complete the repeal of this article.
So if I read that correctly, it would be upon second and final reading, repealing Article, do I use the word repeal? Repealing Article 2111-2, Art in Public Places Program, along with 2-308, 2-310, and 2-311.
Yeah, and that article includes all of those. They're just not reflected in the printed-out ordinance from the software for some reason.
I have a motion and second. So we are amended. All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the amended ordinance on second reading. Let's adopt the amendment first, she says. Okay. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. The amendment on, nevermind.
It's all good.
Keep on going back. Motion on the floor is to adopt the amendment. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to amend the ordinance to include Section 2308, 2310, and 2311, repealing the entire article in its entirety, passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance as amended on second reading? On second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your...
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended on final reading? I have a motion and second. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast.
Yes, we do. Mayor, we'll start with Becky Bender.
Thank you, Evan.
Becky Bender, word five. From the Bible in the Book of Deuteronomy, Chapter 11, this truth can be applied to the town of Norman. I quote, "Look, today I set before you a blessing and a curse. There will be a blessing if you obey the commands of the Lord your God I am giving you, and a curse if you do not obey the commands of the Lord your God, and you turn aside from the path I command you," end quote. Father, thank you for this large and varied group of people that you have brought together today. We take the time now to notice and appreciate the things that are good and right in this town. Thank you for protecting those things. We also see that we can be uncaring toward one another and have a hard time even agreeing on simple things. We feel exasperated and frustrated at times. So first, I pray that you will remind each of us that you have sent your son Jesus to die on the cross for our sins, and that he rose from the dead. You offer us peace and salvation if we will come to you and follow you. Thank you. We understand you to be a God of kindness, and we see your kindness is all around us. But we also believe, when you said, "You will not leave the guilty unpunished," so we ask you for wisdom, to know how to trust you, and the humility to depend upon you. Help us to daily turn away from our own sin and turn to you. Will you show us if we have turned our back on you or turned our back on your word by not obeying your commands? Help us to return to you. Help us to have your passion, but also have your grace as we speak. May you be honored, honored in this town. And then, may we know the steps we need to take to make this town safe. May we all wake up and be a part of the solution, and help us to know how to make it a good place to live, and know how to right the things that are wrong. We know that it cannot be done by our own might or our own power, but only by your spirit. That's why we come to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Sam Beuth?
Hi, my name's Sam Beuth. I'm living in word five. Congratulations, Nash. Hopefully, you'll be representing my award pretty well. Congratulations to you on, you know, your honeymoon, getting married and all that. Three minutes. Man, Norman's got a problem, and it has to do with the unhoused and the crime that, I moved here when I was 18 years old, owned a business downtown. I warned a former council person about, I was afraid somebody was going to get hurt, and they didn't take it seriously. A month later, a guy was shot in the back of the head and then shot two rounds in his face, point-blank range, and he was an unhoused person. There are a lot of people in this, in Norman that are afraid to come up here and speak. I've spoken with several business owners, residential owners. There are senior citizens that refuse to shop downtown, and that affects the people that own those businesses. It attacks, it affects tax revenue, city revenue. You know, we talk about having these park days, and, you know, I'm afraid that a child's going to get hurt. I'm, there's, there's syringes in parks. There's syringes being dumped in our drainage system, you know? My kids, I've raised them here, and they're, they're great kids. I don't worry about them. And something needs to be done, and I want to invite one of y'all, I don't care who it is, to come with me and go around and talk to residential owners, to go around and speak with business owners. I will clear my day to do it, and I suggest you do the same. Because what's happening here, you can't reward bad behavior. You can't do it. There's got to be consequences. I've worked with alcoholics and addicts for over three decades. I know what I'm talking about. You guys, this is serious. I'm afraid somebody's going to get hurt again, you know? And we're also being put in this, in a situation where we might have to defend ourselves. Nobody wants to do that. Nobody even wants to think about doing something like that. But we need more presence of police. That's all we're asking. I'm not against unhousing. Help them. I know what it takes to help an addict. You know, you can't reward them. They gotta, they gotta, it's a hand up, not a hand out. So, you know, please, somebody, Nash, if you want to come with me, let's go around. These people are afraid to get up here. That's another problem. Why are people afraid to get up here and speak? Why is that? They can't come up here and talk because they're going to get bashed?
You ran out there. Thank you, sir.
Judy Moss?
Judy Moss, word four. What I have here is a... What I have here is a Norman police report. I have covered the name to protect the lady's name and her privacy. It's a sixty-one-year-old unhoused female from Ohio who came to Norman approximately 2001. Since her arrival, she has had one hundred and twenty arrests for public intoxication, twenty-four for trespassing, two indecent exposures, eleven public drunkenness, four larcenies, two vandalism, two interfacing, interfering with officers, two age misrepresentations, and one disturbing the peace. According to the Housing First Emphasis, putting this woman in housing at the taxpayer's expense will stop all this as irresponsible behavior. I personally feel that is a little bit optimistic and not very likely. She needs help, that just a place to live. She needs more help than just a place to live. She needs to learn to live responsibly, and I can even imagine how many man-ires this entails for our Norman PD. And there's just many, many more of these other, these people. I also have a report for what's going on sometimes at 109 West Gray. Our already taxed police department spends a lot of time at 109 West Gray Street, the shelter known as Friends House. Over a six-month period of time, there were over seventy-two NPD calls. Thirty-three were 911 calls. Of the seventy-two calls, only six were welfare and medical checks. However, there were thirty-six domestic disturbances, fourteen larcenies, nine trespassing, five threats, three fights, one indecent exposure, and two assaults. The Friends House gets fifty-five thousand dollars a month to run the shelter. That's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Forty-three thousand, seven hundred a month, or five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is for safety and security. This is in addition to police coverage also. Only eleven thousand a month is going to help the homeless. This is only a twenty percent efficiency rate. All this expense to serve a point...
Judy, you've run out of time. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Diana Hutzel.
Diana Hutzel, Ward five. Tonight, I'm here to talk about Norman's disturbing crime statistics based upon data. In October 2022, just nine months ago, the FBI released its most recent crime statistics based upon uniform crime reporting data collected from eighteen thousand law enforcement agencies across the United States, including the city of Norman. Based upon an analysis of the data collected across those eighteen thousand agencies, the city of Norman received a total crime rate index of eight out of a hundred. What's the relevance of eight out of a hundred? That means that ninety-two percent of cities across the United States with populations similar to Norman experienced less crime than Norman and rated safer than Norman, ninety-two percent. The data also identified that more than eighty-eight percent of Oklahoma communities have a lower crime than Norman, eighty-eight percent. A comparison of Oklahoma City makes Norman crime levels even more staggering. Based upon the same data, Norman's population is five times less than that of Oklahoma City, a difference of over five hundred and fifty thousand individuals, over half a million people. Yet Norman residents are fifty percent as likely to be a victim of a violent crime as Oklahoma City residents, and eighty-four percent as likely to be a victim of property crime as Oklahoma City residents. The fourth largest city and the closest to us in population, I'm sorry, post population to Norman is Broken Arrow. The difference between our two cities is less than thirteen thousand residents. Yet Broken Arrow has a significantly less crime rate than Norman. Broken Arrow has a crime index of twenty-two, significantly better than Norman's eight. In Broken Arrow, you have only a one in six hundred and fifty-seven chance of becoming a victim of violent crime. But in Norman, your chances are more than twice that, one in three sixteen. In Broken Arrow, you have only a one in fifty-four chance of being a victim of a property crime, but in Norman, you have a much higher chance, one in thirty-two. Again, a difference of less than thirteen thousand residents from Norman. I greatly appreciate, greatly appreciate, the extremely challenging and difficult work Norman Police Department officers and staff do every day to serve and protect the city of Norman. The city of Norman has a request for proposal out on the street to conduct a study to evaluate Norman Police Department staffing and the operations to support the needs of Norman. Unfortunately, the implementation and benefits from that study will not occur well until 2024 or later. The city of Norman cannot wait for later. Please take or facilitate whatever actions are necessary now to make our city safer. I encourage everyone to go out to the neighborhood, neighborhoodscout.com website and take a look at the data for themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carlinda.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor, for hearing me once again. I don't think I've had an opportunity to properly introduce myself. So let my start by saying, the reason this topic is near and dear to my heart is my mother suffers from severe mental illness. My mother was mentally ill the day I was born. The day I turned eighteen, it became my responsibility to call law enforcement when she had to be court committed. Most of the time, we could try to talk her into going. Her case manager and family members who cared about her could encourage her, but there were times that law enforcement had to come, and she had to be court committed. Another reason this is near and dear to my heart is my sister passed away March seventh of 2022. She died of other causes, although within the past two months prior to her death, she had overdosed three times of fentanyl. She suffered from mental illness, and she was a fentanyl addict. So that's where my heart is coming from when you hear me speak at city council. I now live in a community where I get to visit parks and I get to walk on sidewalks. I didn't grow up getting to do that. I grew up living in areas like Will Rogers Courts in South Oklahoma City, and you can't go outside there. So I would like to share with you this evening the things that I have witnessed or experienced since our last council meeting. Two men riding their bicycles west on Hubert near Ponca intersection. One was yelling profanities and threats. He got off his bicycle and lunged at a passing motorist in a truck. Two, as I was walking, I heard someone ahead of me talking. I just thought they were having a heated conversation on his cellphone. It was not until the man was walking towards me, closing the gap between us, that I realized he had no cellphone. He was yelling profanities and threats and was staring straight at me while saying, "I'm going to kill you, B." He passed by and headed to the north side of the building behind a Friends House. Three, a man sat on the sidewalk, all sprawled out with all of his belongings, on Acres and Porter, at the boarded-up house west of Checkers, preventing others from using the sidewalk. Sidewalks have to remain open and unobstructed so they are ADA compliant. Four, I watched a lady unbandage gauze from one of her feet on the corner of Main and Jones while she smoked a glass pipe of something with no scent. Five, I saw several occasions where people were asleep on the sidewalk on Main Street as I walked by nervously, hoping my little dog wouldn't accidentally startle them, possibly causing me to become the next assault victim like the man at Ellison Feed. Six, I witnessed a man unaware of his surroundings speaking to the glass door east of Custard Factory the entire time that I could see him while I walked on the other side of the street. Seven, I watched a man staring at a chain-link fence unbeknownst to him the many others around him in what appeared to be a drug or alcohol-induced stupor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chelsea.
Thank you so much for the honor to speak with you. I'm Chelsea Gravel, Carlinda Gravel's daughter, and Ward four as well. And I've also witnessed this list of items. Let's see. I watched a woman changing clothes in public. I've watched a man carrying two large bicycle wheels on Porter and Main headed west. I watched people loitering on the sidewalk outside of a Friends House on Gray Street. Dare not walk on the sidewalk towards the post office. I watched what appeared to be a drug deal change hands at a boarded-up house west of Checkers on Main and Acres. Saw about fifty empty bubble packs of cold medicine on the ground with an empty Red Bull can on the corner of Ponca and Main. I encountered a purple opaque bag leaning against the wall east of the garage. It was filled with drug paraphernalia. When the officer arrived and began dismantling the bag, there was gauze pads, saline, hospital patient clothing, and more. I witnessed a lady stealing chairs from Longfellow School from the teacher's break area. These are just some of the things that I've been seeing. Thank you for your time.
Mary Frances. Mary Frances, would you like to speak?
Okay. Mary Frances, Ward seven. A change of, a change of tone here. You passed an ordinance this evening, Section twelve, five, twenty-six of the Norman Code, changing the number of voting board members to your convention and tourism development funds, allowing four new board members who are to be representatives of the sports industry. And so, individual sports represented for. Why not individual arts being represented? There is murals, there's theater, there's sculpture, there's painting, there's printmaking, there's music. A lot of different types of art, as well as a lot of different types of sports. So why would we have six sports representatives and only one, two of arts or academia? Ah, I think, hey, that's my concern, that sports is really overloaded in this community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Evan.
Oh, thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. So I have two books with me. One is Why We Sleep. This gentleman is a professor out at Berkeley, and this is a book that was written fifteen years ago, The Long Emergency. James Howard Kuntzler. I can't help but be moved by these anecdotes of terror and anxiety that people are feeling. The confluence of macro geopolitical consumption and resource usage is manifesting in the loss, the diminishment of purpose, a diminishment in the sense of value for the future, value for my life, the empowerment that one, you can, you can generate it with just your breath. Mr. Nash, congratulations. Make sure you get the book that I gifted to every member. It's Ward-specific. It was not to Rachar. It was to Ward five. Make sure you get that from him, please. I gave everybody the book Breath, which is all about these fundamental changes that we can all incorporate to maximize our respiration and our oxygenation, and that flows with sleep. You know, we are not teaching people the research that can empower them. Permaculture design empowers us. Postural changes can empower us. How do we institute a reformation of the way people become adults? We've got to encourage them to take the little, small actions, like planting seeds, like getting over the grossness of getting in the soil. You're not getting dirty, you're getting soiled. It's one of the most important ways for us to capture carbon. We're providing, we're creating foods, we're embracing, and we're revering the past, we're protecting the future by being more efficient. I don't have any children, but I know a lot of you do. We're in a position of power to make these changes that can have a reverberating effect for all time. And that's really what I want to see us do. I want to see us, and maybe this will be something that you all can talk about at the retreat, but the potential for us to do something special and to enlist all generations, it's here.
That's the end? All right. Are there any further comments from council? Then we adjourn.